There we go, okay. Um, Jeannie, I think first up, we have the, the La Mora renewal.
Yep.
Not La Mora, the Heritage renewal. Sometimes affiliated with La Mora.
Jen, you're muted.
Am I muted?
Uh.
No, no, you, you know, Jim Murphy, you were, uh, on before, but now you're muted. Jen Ziskin, you're muted.
There we are. She's, I don't know.
All right.
They probably died. I'm here. Hi, how are you all?
All right.
Um, and it's.
And is tonight's petition just a straight renewal, all the same, uh, conditions as last time?
Yes.
Okay, Jeannie, because I don't have it open in front of me, what, what, what is the petition number on this one?
Twenty, twenty-two oh nine dash nine.
Okay, so twenty-two oh nine dash nine. Um, petitioners here seeking a, a renewal of your, uh, outdoor entertainment license. Um, same conditions as before, no changes.
No, nothing, nothing's changing at all.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to say in support of your petition?
Um, I mean, just, I am really hoping that it does pass. I mean, the, having that, the outside ability to have the music outside has been just incredible for us. And being able to do the events, um, obviously with COVID too, and having the outside space has been extremely helpful for the survival of heritage, um, you know, as well as creating, you know, a safe haven for people during this ongoing pandemic that never seems to be ending. So.
Okay. Um, and is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this petition? Mr. Constantine, you're muted, but I bet you want to speak.
Let me unmute myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Yep. Good. Um. Yeah, so. Uh, I want to talk about this. I know we've, we've done a lot with, uh, the whole winter outdoor entertainment thing. So I just wanted to, uh, talk about what's been going on, what I've noticed, uh, and also what the neighbors have noticed as well. Um, so where do I begin? Uh, let me start off by saying that the heritage, I, I don't believe they deserve to renew this permit. Um, they violated the conditions of the bylaw and the permit over the past few years. Uh, they exceeded the sound levels of seventy-five percent decibel maximum, uh, which seventy-five is pretty excessive, uh, standard. Um, they did not preserve recorded test results for each outdoor entertainment as specified in the permit. Uh, and they did not submit, uh, all the test results to the ZBA, uh, as required, three strikes. Um, so I'm, I'm really curious, I'm fascinated by this, I'm really surprised, but most of all, I'm angry by the behavior of the heritage, given all the work that the town did to create the bylaw, work through the permitting process, only to have the heritage thumb their nose at us and ignore their obligations. I think it's shameful. Uh, and if it was me, I'd be embarrassed to come before this board. So let's not kid ourselves, all the work that was done, uh, to put the bylaw in place is for one business, the heritage, that's it. Um, this isn't doing something for the greater good of the town, okay? No other businesses ask for this, or will take advantage of the bylaw. Uh, you take a look at the time and effort of the folks that have tried to craft this process, planning board, zoning board, public meetings, the annual town meetings, various private individuals, all have worked to try to make this happen. And we get non-compliance out of it. Uh, so I heard, um, I heard on previous ZBA meetings, someone said heritage is a town resource. Not sure what that means. I think all businesses are town resources, bank, pharmacy, gas station, liquor store. Uh, they all provide goods and services and make our lives easier. But let's not forget, that's their goal, to make a profit. The heritage is like any other business, they're here to make money. Uh, and that does not put them above the laws of the town. Uh, with COVID, heritage asked to extend the outdoor entertainment year round. Uh, again, another meeting to go through that, the town accommodated this, even though the bylaw specifically states May through October. Uh, this extension, extension was granted without any other changes to the permit. I asked for a reduction to the, uh, the seventy-five decibel maximum, but again, it was rebuffed. Um, heritage thrived, they even created a third restaurant. Congratulations, I think that's great. Sixty percent of the restaurants in the United States go out of business and heritage gets to build another one. That's, that's amazing news. So I'm not too worried about the heritage going under, uh, if this permit isn't granted. Um, I think they're gonna be just fine. Uh, all in all, I think the heritage, uh, has acted as a bad neighbor, wasted a lot of people's time, and have not earned the right to be granted another permit for outdoor entertainment. And if I could share my screen, I'd like to share some details with you folks.
Well, I, I would like to know that you say the heritage violated the conditions of the permit. Uh, had you registered any complaints with anyone?
Ye- yes, that's why I'd like to share my screen. I've got a spreadsheet that has all that information in it.
Jeannie, can, can he share his screen?
He should be able to, wait a minute. Yep, he, he can, um, go ahead.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Constantine.
Okay, can you guys see that?
Very small.
Yes.
How's that? A little better?
Okay, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so. So listing of events, at least that I counted and took my readings on for the, uh, that were coming out of the heritage. Uh, starting off here with twenty-twenty-two events, um, there's been a few, this one, which was done April thirtieth, is just horrendous, okay? The decimal level seventy-two, seventy-eight, um, it was, it started at one thirty in the afternoon, and it went to ten thirty PM, nine hours. It was a constant thumping, there was a DJ. Um, and it was just horrible. I called the police twice, uh, and they had told me that other folks had called the police as well. So if you look here in column D where it says heritage, decimals, you can see that the only ones reported were, uh, these six here. They did not take any readings for these other ones. So I counted twenty-five with decimal, thirteen of them with decimals over the limit of seventy-five. Um, this is the police that I talked to. Um, and again, I can go back into twenty-twenty as well. These six readings, I can show you, uh, this is what I received from Jeannie. These are the six readings that, um, Jennifer's folks did at the, at the heritage. And you can see there, we're, we're never gonna be close. Um, if you take a reading during a soft part of a song or a little time, you're not gonna get a great reading. So this, this whole process just isn't seeing it be working that well. Again, let's, let's take this one, for example. Uh, so Friday, uh, September seventeenth, I got seventy-nine, eighty, they got seventy-two. Um. This one, Saturday, September fourth, I got seventy-two, seventy-five, they got sixty-eight.
Mr. Constantine, are, are you using identical equipment, I hope?
Uh, I am using my phone. And it is calibrated to what the correct decimal that it should be.
Okay, um, but, but as, as the guy who did all the research and did all the brain damage to write the bylaw, there's a very specific testing machine that's supposed to be used.
Okay. I, I don't have that, but, but besides that.
But, but it can, but it can be rented. And, and, and the point was to try to, uh, have Apple, I'll, I'll let you continue, but I use my phone is not the right answer.
Okay, all right, that's, and that's fine. Let's, let's not neglect that. Um, I've got twenty-five readings, Jennifer has six.
Right.
Okay, well, well, let's not lose sight of that. Um, so the, the other thing that, um, is really difficult about all this, okay? Uh, is the decimal reading itself. So the, the bylaw states a decimal reading of seventy-five maximum, right?
Right.
If you take a look at other towns, okay, noise in Boston, take a look at this. Um. This has anything louder than seventy decimals at any time, except for permitted construction. Seventy decimals, this is the city of Boston. If you take a look at ordinances for other cities and towns, take a look at this. Fifty, seventy, sixty, fifty. Um, look at Braintree here. You've got can't exceed sixty decimals at all times, cannot exceed fifty decimals. Okay, Bridgewater, sixty-five, sixty, sixty, fifty, fifty decimals forever. Um, just take a look at these, we're not even close, we are so far out of range. Um, that, I, I don't know how we got to this point. Um, so I think this is one of the key factors. Uh, seventy-five is too high, okay? This is a serious flaw with the bylaw, okay? Uh, it wasn't properly researched or vetted with the planning board. I attended those meetings with the planning board. Uh, and I asked for them to reduce the decimal levels, I was ignored. Sixty decimals maximum should be part of the outdoor entertainment permit. We're way off here. So. Again, the fact that we're missing data, the fact that our own bylaw is way off, and I believe that should be corrected. I, I don't believe they should be issued a permit. They, they have not submitted the reports, they only submitted one report, supposed to submit monthly reports. So I don't believe they should receive a, uh, a permit.
Okay.
Um. The only, the only thing that I would suggest, and I really suggest, and I don't even know if I want to go here or not. Um, because I know, I'm not sure if Ed's gonna do the Brew Fest again. But if that's already planned and in place, um. I'd be okay to allow one permit within, you can read this. To allow one permit within May and October timeframe, reduce the decimal levels to sixty. Uh. Lyre and cantling, that should be limited to four hours. Uh, temporary sound barrier, thirty feet of plywood along the stone wall of North Main, and have the permit expire within one year. I don't want to go through another two years of this. Um, and again, items five, six, seven, eight, and nine would be from the original permit. That, that would be acceptable, I think, if, if the Brew, Brew Fest is even planned, I'm not sure if that's there. Otherwise, I don't. I, I, I don't think they've earned the right to have another permit for two years, given how egregious they were in violating the, uh, the, this process and violating what their obligations were with, with, uh, putting on outdoor entertainment. And. I'll buy a, a, a device to try to match it up. But again, we're still never gonna match up, okay? Well, whenever they take a reading, obviously, I'm not gonna take it the exact same time. The, the other thing that I noticed is I've, I've never seen them in the designated spot where they were supposed to be.
Well, a, a, as, as the part of that, it's easy, uh, because if you have the right device, doesn't matter if you're measuring at the right, at the same time or not. If you got the right device and it's calibrated, your, your data's gonna be valid.
No, no, I, I just, I'm sorry, I disagree with that. If, if, if they're playing a soft song, they've got a band out there, uh, you're gonna get us a lower reading. If they've got a hard rock band out there and they're doing a louder song, you're gonna get another reading. You're never gonna get even close to the reading.
Sir, sir, I, 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 I agree with you, my, and I'm not articulating what I'm trying to say, so I'm, I'm sorry about that. Um, yeah, they may come out in the softest part of the time and say, look, sixty. But if you're out there with the right device, getting a legit reading of seventy-eight, then they're over. Doesn't have to be at the same moment in time.
Well, who, let, let me just ask, Mr. Chairman, whose burden is it to do the measuring? Uh, and have the correct device? I mean, a neighbor who is monitoring the situation, uh, I, I don't know, I don't have any reason to believe that his device is inaccurate. You, you did do the homework on that, so. Uh, I defer to you on that question, but it is the permit holder who has the duty to demonstrate compliance, to file the reports, et cetera. And that's, my question is, has that been done or hasn't it been touched?
Can you, um, uh, Mr. Constantine, can you put the conditions back up? You had it on screen for a second ago, and then you clicked away.
Sure.
So, go, go ahead, John. I just, I just, I thought having the, the permit conditions up was helpful, at least to me.
Well, that's really all I, I had to say, I, I'm, uh. We did spend a lot of time on this, and we, we thought we had a, a structure in place that was gonna work.
Right.
It depends on the compliance of the permit holder.
Right, right, and, and, and you're exactly right, that under conditions five and six, it's the permit holder's job to make the test and keep, keep the records, and then there's an opportunity for the neighbor to sort of cross-check if they wish. Um, and, and Ms. Ziskin, um, why don't we have the records we're supposed to have for items five and six?
Items five and six. So I can, fortunately, I don't have great eyes and I can't read the print, but I have, I had much more, many more readings than what he's saying. I mean, we've been doing readings every time we have the music that would be projecting across the street. We take the device, we go across the street and take the sound reading. So I know we have been doing that. Um, I mean, I physically have done it myself over there. Um.
Have you, um?
So I'm not sure, maybe I didn't get all of the readings from my manager. Um, she had sent this to me. I will say, I mean, I need to submit these monthly, I hadn't been, I had been sending, you know, submitting them all at once. We've been keeping track of them. Um, so I, I definitely apologize for not getting them sent to Jeannie every month. Um, and I can certainly do that, of course. I, I just didn't even know that, um, I should have known that we should be submitting them monthly. We have been taking them at all the events, though, so I, I definitely disagree that, I mean, we take a lot of care about the neighbors and the community and, you know, it is not deliberate. If we're, if we miss something, it is not deliberate by any means. Um, we take this to, you know, every permit that we hold, we take extremely seriously. And I will tell you that heritage will not survive without this. I can't, I'm, you know, it is squeaking by and, you know, I mean, La Mora, if you had any idea, Mr. Constantine, what we've gone through, I mean, I could cry right now to hear your words. So, anyway.
Um, permission to speak?
Who's, who is that? I'm sorry.
That's me.
Oh, Mr. Constantine, sure, go, go ahead.
So I know Jennifer said she's got a lot more of this. So this is what, uh, Jeannie Guthrie sent me. And this is from the email. She said, hi, Stephen, this is what Jen sent me. She said she had unfortunately missed some because of the event manager that was at the heritage for three months less. I guess she did not upload the information that she had on her phone. Uh, so this is all that Jennifer submitted, according to, uh, to Jeannie, just these six events. And they were submitted all at once, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, and Jeannie, is that consistent with your recollection, too?
Yes, but, uh, Jen said she had it on her phone. She, she, it's not that she didn't have it, she had it on her phone.
Okay.
But I submitted today as well. Did you, did you get those today?
You did? Uh, no.
So I submitted, because I have the thirtieth on mine. And then we really didn't have, I mean, we didn't have a lot of events. That was like one of our first events, um, with the music outside.
So you should have admitted the, the March eighteenth, was that submitted?
March eighteenth, let me see.
February first, I mean, April first?
From this year?
This year.
March eighteenth. That I don't have on this sheet. And there was the out, there was outside loud music on that day?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that, on April the first, that was higher than seventy-five.
Yeah, I mean, I will say, I go across the street and a truck goes by, and it's, I mean, I, I understand seventy-five is a, a high decibel, but the traffic on thirty-three North Main Street makes the decimal reader go up to that amount.
Um, so, so, so just wait, wait, wait for the truck to go past, I mean.
No, 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 I do, I'm just saying, I, it's a loud sound, it's a loud decibel, and it's, you know, that's what we had agreed upon, but I don't think changing the decibels to lower is, I mean, it's like literally the traffic on thirty-three North Main Street makes up to that level of decibel.
Okay, so, the, the, let's, let's try to parse out some things that the board can and can't do. The seventy-five is in the bylaw, that has to be changed at town meeting. So regardless of whether or not Mr. Constantine has the better argument on science, we've got no ability to change that tonight. That, that's a town meeting point. Um, it, it also seems that, um, uh, Mr. Constantine has a perfectly fair point, which is the reports are supposed to be submitted. That's the whole point of the process. So I think, uh, uh, you know, to the extent the permit's renewed, that, that's gonna have to be in monthly. And Jeannie, you may as well just send those to Mr. Constantine when you get them, because he's gonna cross-check them with his stuff. And that's, that's, that's the whole point of, of the regulations we adopted. Was check and cross-check. Um.
But currently has the thirty-day requirement. That's not adding anything new, Rick.
Right, right, no, I, I agree.
That's one of the conditions.
Right. Okay, um, is anyone else wish to be heard on this petition?
Yes.
Ms. Easely. Please, go ahead.
My name is Lisa Easely. I live at Two Elliott Streets, so just right around the corner, across from Jameson Field. Um, I have been dismayed over the last couple of years by the number of events that are being held at the heritage with loud music. My son is a musician, a bass player, so I'm a music lover. But I was triggered to join this meeting tonight because that party on Saturday, August thirtieth, April thirtieth, just this past weekend, was outrageous. I was in my house with all the doors closed, and I could hear boom, 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 ladies' night blaring at nine o'clock, so loud that I went over to the heritage to see what it was, and I felt like it was Studio Fifty-four. And I kept monitoring the noise to see when it was gonna end, and in fact, it didn't stop until ten-thirty. So, um, I came to this meeting and I did some research to try to, because I don't know what the rules are, I mean, I just saw now on the screen what they are. I didn't know if there were limits by decibels or number of, number of events or, uh, days of the week. Um, but I also saw that the notice for this hearing said that the renewal, uh, was up subject to conditions. So could you talk about what the conditions are that are being considered for renewal of this, uh, petition?
Sure, um, in, uh, and Steve, since you're our, our sort of, uh, video guide default, can you put up the existing, um, conditions? It's like, yeah, I think that's right.
So, so just to be clear, the first one is the amended permit that really only number one changed where it said, uh, year-round, everything else is the same.
So that's a, that's, that's a new request to do year-round events?
No, 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 that, that, that was a.
That's what it was.
The, 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 the permit has been around for a while. Then there was a more recent request last time to be able to do year-round in light of the, in light of the pandemic and stuff. And then the rest of the conditions were, um, Steve and Jen, keep me honest, but I think the, um, the other conditions, one through nine, are what are in the existing permit tonight that's being sought to be renewed. That's what, that's what's on the table, so to speak.
So, so Rick, just to add to that, um, that if this is renewed and what they're looking for is not to go year-round, and Lisa, I think this is your question, but it is to go back to May first through October thirty-first, is that correct?
Well, that is, that is a question that's on the table, definitely.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and Ms. Ziskin, Jen, what's, what, what is your position?
Um, I mean, we, we do have, you know, outside dining year-round, but there hasn't been, you know, with, I mean, as people have moved and become more comfortable inside, we haven't done, you know, a lot of events outside in the winter months. It is ni, it is nice to be able to have it. If we need to petition, you know, I, I, I don't know, I didn't realize that, um, this was going to question the year-round as well. Um. I thought that was amended and that was going to be moving forward, but again, I'm willing to compromise. I don't want this to be a disruption to the community, to the, you know, I apologize for April thirtieth, we took readings. Um, you know, when the sound goes up, we always go out and talk to the DJ and make sure they put it down, and I'm sorry that it didn't happen for that event.
But is there a time when it's supposed to end? Is that probably? Ten, ten thirty it goes to?
Yes.
That's awfully late for a residential.
I mean, it's.
I know you're in the business zone, but we are a butters in the residential, and that's late, ten-thirty is very late.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, a lot of events go till, um, eleven, you know, in most venue locations, so.
I know, but the Sherid, the Sherwin Inn was not a disco when I bought my house. I mean, it feels.
It's a, it's a wedding, it's a bar and bar, this was a bar and bat mitzvah, you know, that was on Saturday night, um, you know.
Right, but those used to be a key.
Steve, can I just ask you to scroll to the existing conditions, just so they stay up while people are talking, please? Thank you for, thanks, I mean, you, you have them, and, and I don't, so I, I appreciate the accommodation. Now, uh, and just a little further up, so that what, that what's the, the nine that are on the table now? There we go, perfect. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Easely, please continue.
No, I mean, I am very sensitive because of the pandemic. I watched, because I'm a neighbor, so I watched what the town, what heritage did, and that the town came out to support with the picnic tables, and I appreciate that, and I understand these were dire times, and businesses had to do what they could to stay afloat, and I thought that was a very creative um, effort, and the town obviously benefits from having a nice restaurant in town, so I understand that, but I just think, again, I didn't know what the rules were, but it seemed like they, you know, the noise was much louder than I would have thought appropriate. The timing is much later than I thought. And the frequency, again, it used to be occasionally there was a wedding, or occasionally there was a bat mitzvah, but now it's like, and then again, I thought it was Friday and Saturday night only, but now it just, it, it just seems like it's all the time. And I'm concerned because this music was so loud, and all the windows in my house were closed up because it was cold, but, you know, we're gonna be having open windows soon, and so is there gonna be music blaring till ten-thirty at night on a summer night? It's it's kind of distressing to consider.
Okay, again, the ten-thirty is in the zoning bylaw, so we really, well, I suppose we could exact a lower time, but, but that was not pulled out of the air, I guess is what I'd say, in the ten-thirty. Um, but, but a, a, all valid points. Um, do you have more for us, ma'am?
No, that's it. But thank you, Mr. Constantine, for all your research. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Constantine, you want to be heard again?
Yeah, um, so. Here's the bylaw, right? And it, it says, here's, and it says here, ten-thirty. Um, so again, to Lisa's point, I think it's a little bit late, um, but it's in the bylaw. Also in the bylaw, you've got the weekdays, it says during May through October is part of the specialist term. That's also in the bylaw, and yet an exception was made during COVID to go year-round. And now you're telling me that you cannot make an exception for the DBA level or to change when this ends? It sounds like something isn't right there.
Maybe, maybe, maybe we don't have the right to have it go longer than, than, than May to October. I'm trying to remember Jonathan or. I'm trying to remember Jonathan or, or, or Jeannie or, or Ron, can you remember what our grounds were for being able to extend to year round?
No. Well, it, it says in, uh, section thirty-four, A, the exceptions may be granted by the ZBA for weekdays during May through October as part of the special permit.
Well, i- i- if, if the year round is not, is not on a weekday, then I believe the year round is Fridays and Saturdays, nine PM on Sunday, Sunday for a Monday holiday. For weekdays. I don't think it says May to October. Stephen, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, I don't think it says May to October, except for weekdays.
That's the second, uh, uh, condition of the permit is for weekday operation for our, to twenty-seven weekdays to be selected by the permit holder between May one and October thirty-one each year. So there there's a limitation on the weekday permits through October. The, uh, otherwise, the, the first condition is outdoor entertainment is allowed for weekend operation hours on Friday, Saturday and Sunday year round. Okay, and that's, there's nothing in the bylaw that, that says we can't grant a year round permit.
Right. I, I think, I think to Stephen's point is before the pandemic, New England weather took care of the May to October problem. Not the interest in being outside was pretty low. Or the October to May problem.
Yeah, and I think the May through October is to quiet things down for the school year.
The, the intent of town meeting might be beyond me, but, but that is what it says and, and May to October weekdays is what it says. Um, is there, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this? Not that I'm shutting off discussion among the people who are here. Just wanna make sure that, because I've only got one little partial screen of, of, of attendees down the side. I wanna make sure there's nobody's missed. Okay. All right, so Ms. Easely, Mr. Constantine, you have anything further to say? Or Ms. Ziskin?
Yeah. Say something. So a couple of things. Just the history of this. And just what's, what's been happening. So I've got, I had a tenant, Eve Asbury, you guys might remember her. She went to the planning board meetings. She's gone to the ZBA meetings, um, and she was very much upset with what was going on with the sounds that were being created. Um, and she became pretty close to Jen. Uh, and it was kind of, Jen said, here's my phone number, call me if there's a problem or call the, the um, the Heritage. There's no need to call the police on this. It's okay. She did that. She did that for about a period of two months and then she came to me, she said, Steve, it doesn't do any good. Jennifer does not shut down the music. She does not. The, the manager at the end does not turn it down. And she said, this point forward, I'm also gonna call the police, which is why I call the police when I hear this. And, and again, Jen's a nice person and everything, but she's got three restaurants she needs to manage now. A lot of work and she can't, i- i- it's obvious, given that only six readings were sent and not even recorded on a monthly basis, that this process is a little bit unwieldy for Jen and her organization. They're having a hard time with this and it's causing issues with the neighbors and with the town. Um, I'll give you another example. This, and again, April thirtieth was really rough. I have a, uh, a tenant, a new tenant. Eva's left, my new tenant, um, wonderful lady. She's a chiropractor. Um, and, uh, she works in West, in, uh, Westwood. Uh, and what she does because of these events, and you can tell, there's a lot of events throughout the summer, is anytime there's a band, anytime there's some kind of a party, she has to move to the back of the house, furthest away from the roadside, shut all the windows, turn the TV up and try to drown out the music, or she puts on noise cancelling um, headphones, okay? On April thirtieth, she, we talked immediately after that, and she told me that even with the windows closed, even with the noise cancelling headphones, she got a seizure. Okay, she's got some medical issues and she got a seizure. And she attributes that to the, um, the music, to the, the noise that was coming from the, uh, the event. And you gotta remember, it was, if you saw it, there was a tent. You would have thought that the tent would have cut down on the noise a little bit. It didn't. It was, it was very loud, very noisy. Um, and then one more thing that I just wanna bring up. Um, it seems like I hate to say it, it seems like the ZBA is starting to lean towards granting another permit for another year, another two years. Okay? Um, and if that's the way they're going, uh, here's what I'd like to suggest. I'd like to see some language, some language added that says, so this is in addition to what we have in the current permit. Can you guys read this?
Like, where it says language to be added? Yep, that's up.
Yeah, okay. So maximum acceptable sound level shall be sixty dBa as measured at the complaint location, where that portion of the public way closest to the complaint. What do, what do you think about that? About adding that? Well, it's dropping the DBa for seventy-five.
The, the, the board hasn't discussed that, any of this at all. I, I will tell you that we could, I suppose, impose standards lower than allowed by the zoning bylaw. And to the extent that they were closed, they'd probably be upheld to the extent that they were too, too far off what the zoning bylaw anticipates. We might be being seen as arbitrary capricious, but it, so.
Okay.
Why, why, why don't you keep reading your list? Cause, uh, uh, and then leave it up, cause the board will discuss it.
Okay, uh, so number ten, live and mechanical entertainment from outdoor events will not exceed uh, four hours for any twenty-four hour period. So I think what that covers is a, um, six thirty to ten thirty event with a band. Uh, that, that April thirtieth event, that was nine hours of solid music. Uh, that was just, it was egregious. It just was horrible. So that's ten. I'll finish reading these out. The next one, number eleven, permit holder agrees to erect a permanent sound barrier. Um, and so let me, let me talk about the case for a sound barrier. So this is going back to twenty seventeen. This is when we just had two permits available for the Brew Fest. And the zoning board agreed to put up uh, condition for a twenty-four feet of plywood sound barriers, and that's along the roadway. Um, given that this music is gonna be allowed pretty much year round, I think it makes sense to put up a permanent sound barrier. And what I'd like to see is I wanna make sure we're very clear on what that, that means. So a sound barrier will extend from where the Heritage patio meets the main building and will extend to the east to the stone wall near the roadway. And then north along North Main Street to the end of the property where it meets forty-one North Main Street. Sound barrier made of wood from six to eight feet high. Uh, a closed, no open slats, pickets or lattice work, stockade style fence should work. And I'd like to see the sound barrier erected within forty-five days of granting this permit, if this permit is granted. After forty-five days, I'd say no outdoor events will be permitted until the sound barrier is in place. And then the last item I have on here, permit to be for one year expiring June twenty twenty-three. Again, I don't wanna go through two years where I count thirty, thirty-five, and, and Jennifer only has readings for six and doesn't report them.
Okay.
That's it.
Anyone else from the public or the petitioner have comments on these, uh, suggested additional conditions? And Steve, if you'd please, please leave them up, I'd be grateful.
I will.
Uh, Jeannie Guthrie?
Uh, this is me. Um, Jen did send, um, another list of recordings and it included the April thirtieth event, and I just forwarded to Stephen and the board members.
And, and don't, don't tease us. What's the bottom line? What did it read for April thirtieth?
Uh, it was, now you're asking for a lot, geez.
Sorry.
Um, April thirtieth, it showed sixty-two point five.
No, that can't be right.
You said sixty-two point five?
Yeah.
April thirtieth, and I'm showing seventy-two, seventy-eight.
Yeah, sixty-two can't be right.
Well, this is why I said let's not use phones. Let's use the, let's use the calibrated equipment. That's, that's why we wanted to do that was to r- remove this level of discrepancy. And, and you know, maybe the reading taken by the petitioner was during a, a quiet period. That doesn't mean it's still on the reading.
Uh, we do definitely try to take them during the louder periods. Um, but again, you know, you know, you take them like we do a sound check before the event. Then we take the readings during the event. When the music does get louder, we take another reading. You know, we typically try to take another reading. I don't know on April thirtieth if they were able to do that. April thirtieth wasn't a nine hour event though. I just wanna be clear that it was, um, there was a morning event and an evening event. So it was two separate events that day.
Jen, again, I, I hate to disagree, but, um, I kinda keep close tabs on this. That event on April thirtieth, Saturday started at one thirty PM. And the music stopped at ten thirty PM. And in all honesty, even after ten thirty, you had the cars racing out of the, uh, out of Powderhouse Lane. You had a, a huge group of young girls that were yelling and screaming in the parking lot. Things did not settle down until around eleven o'clock that night.
I'm just saying it wa, it was two separate events, but that event started at seven thirty, or, let's see, ten, six thirty, I believe.
Okay.
Um, but anyway, that's ni, neither here nor there. I will, you know, definitely submit monthly. I apologize for not submitting monthly. I submitted today an additional list. Um, you know, we have been taking them. We didn't have events during the winter that were loud outside. Um, you know, that, so we didn't take the readings. I went out a couple of times during some events. And, um, there was like, the cars, like I said, it was, there was no loud sound that you could hear outside, you know, the building.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else before the board discusses? This got through your hand, just your electronic hand is still
Oh, sorry. Do you want me to, um, I can share what, um, Jen sent or you all have it?
Well, um, I, I, I guess I'll ask Steve Constantine and Lisa easily what they want. I mean, it sounds like there's gonna be a disagreement about what's the right data here. Um, kinda know what, no matter what happens. But we can put it up if you wanna see it. Do you wanna see it?
You, you're talking about the events data?
Yes.
Not, not yours, the one that Jen sent.
Stuff Jen just sent us, apparently.
Oh, the one Jen just sent, okay.
Can you, can you stop sharing your screen, Steve?
I mean, if you sent it to me, I can call it up in my email.
Well, I, 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 in general, I'd rather have, have, have Jeannie do the, do our sharing. So if you could stop, Steve, it will have Jeannie do it. That'd be great. Thank you. You've been hugely helpful, though. You can be our audio, video, video person any day.
All right, let's see if I can do this. It is, let's see. It's not going, so, uh, wait.
Don't go away, Steve. We may need to draft you.
There it is. Can you see it?
Yeah, can you scroll down to get down to this year?
I can.
Okay, four thirty, twenty-two, sixty-two point five, okay. All right, so those are definitely different and a lot lower than the information gathered by Mr. Constantine. And I think it's pretty clear they weren't submitted on time or monthly.
Do you want me to stop sharing?
Yes, please. All right, board members, how do we feel about this?
A question, should I start sharing my screen that has the additional items to be added? So at least you have, you can look at that.
Um, maybe not just yet. Let's see what, let's see what my fellow board members say. Or I can put it up again. What, wh- wh- what would you like? Ron, Jonathan, what's helpful?
I, I don't care if it's up on the screen or not.
You go, go ahead and put your amended conditions up, please, Steve. Thank you. All right, Ron, how do you feel about this?
Um, well, there's an obvious discrepancy about the DB levels. And the only way I could think of resolving it is to have an independent party come in and take independent readings. And I don't know who would pay for that though, cause that would be an acoustical engineer who would come in and take a reading. Uh, and that would be the baseline. And then, uh, you know, Mr. Constantine could measure his equipment against that baseline and uh, Jen could measure hers against that baseline. So they have some way of calibrating, you know, what, what the sound level is. And then beyond that, I think that Mr. Constantine is not gonna be satisfied uh, until the bylaws are changed because he feels seventy-five dB is too high. He may be, you know, uh, maybe it is too high. But that's, you know, that's not a simple process to change, cause as you say, it has to go through town meeting.
Okay.
Excuse me. We don't, we don't, I mean, I don't believe the ZBA has uh, any discretion as to set DB, uh, DB ratings.
Well, we, we could, we could go lower. I think the by, by law means we can't go higher. Steve, can you go back to where we were supposed to be instead of showing that additional materials?
Sure, I just wanted to show that.
I, 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 I appreciate that, but if you're, we're, we're in board discussion now, so.
I, I got it. I got it.
There we go. There we go. Thank you. Thank you very much. Jonathan, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna make the point that it, it is, uh, the seventy-five is a maximum permitted by the uh, by law. It's not, uh, re- required
But it's allowed.
It, it's, it's allowed.
Yeah.
Uh, it says the maximum acceptable sound level shall be seventy-five.
Right.
I, I don't read that as saying that we can't in a, you know, this instance reduce that number. I, you know, I'm I, I've got the same problem you have, Ron. Uh, how do we, how do we deal with these test, uh, discrepancies? Even if it's seventy-five, I mean, uh,
I think we have an easy answer to that one. And, and, and as the guy did the homework, I'm, I'm deeply frustrated. That our bylaw and, and our regulations specify a very specific advice to be used, and it's not your iPhone. Um, and, and we've had this conversation several times. So, and, and, and those devices can be purchased, they can be rented. And there's enough at stake here to use the right device. So I would, I would ask neighbors, use the right device, test at the right place, keep your records, just because the records Mr. Constantine has submitted, in my view, are extremely helpful if they had come off the right device. But, but they did not.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. But I, I have another concern, and that is uh, what is the standard for this situation? I mean, if Mr. Constantine is accurate uh, in stating that other towns have a lower standard, I'd be curious to know how those towns arrived at that standard. If they, if they received some professional advice from acoustical engineers or, or what, what is the source of Acoustical engineers or or what what is the source of establishing that standard?
It it it's, I I can tell you from from. The rest of my life. In which. Uh, I've done some representation from time to time. Of uh, the the event. Uh, the outdoor entertainment venue in Mansfield, Massachusetts. Um, that uh. I it it's a hot issue and it's all over the place. And there are lots of engineers with lots of opinions and towns. You know, pick um. Standards that make sense to them, but it is not. Really hard edged, clear signs.
Well, we. Oh, sorry. I don't I don't know how to raise my hand on this. Is that anyone?
Well, right, right now, we're in in board discussion for a minute or two, so if we can. I i unless you've got a a technical correction that we've got something wrong. Okay, okay. Um, thank you. Jonathan, where where were you going?
Well, I I just wanted to note that uh. We anticipated. The need for possible remedies in our amended order. It says uh, in paragraph eight, remedies. For outdoor entertainment exceeding the testing standards will include revocation in whole or in part. So. Uh. I think there's some way we have to tie. Compliance. With our order. To. Basically, automatic uh, revocation. For a period of time. That is. Uh. These reports need to be submitted. Uh, as we say, not less frequently than every thirty days. And. If it if it becomes.
Failure to do so will result in.
And. Uh. And failure to do so will uh. Result in. Revocation of the permit. Subject to reapplication.
Well, the the other way to do this. Is to do the um. Do the permit for a much shorter period. Um, and and that way you don't have to go through a revocation process. But it's it's it it it's a much shorter fuse renewal process, which is a little bit. Inconvenient for everybody. But it does tend to focus the mind. Uh, or 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 we can go the revocation route. I I'm not, I'm not dogmatic. I'm just throwing out an idea.
Well, if we had a. Fifteen day reporting period and this permit. Extended through July, we could, we could review. What uh? Five or six reporting periods.
Right. Well, well. I I guess the big issue on the table. Is um, do we want to renew at all? Uh, or do we want to renew with conditions? Or do we want to renew exactly the way it is? And listening to you guys, it doesn't sound like. Renewing exactly the way it is, no questions asked. Doesn't sound like that's where you're going, so I'm looking at you.
No, because I I I mean, I'm convinced that the. Process is not working the way it was intended.
Okay.
So I think there has to be some kind of modification here. Short of not re. Not approving. This uh, this petition.
Right, okay, and and that that you jumped exactly to my next question, which is, and and how many of us feel we ought to just. Not renew the permit at all. It isn't my sense, looking at you guys, that's where you're going either.
No, I I I don't feel that way. No, I don't. I don't think we should revoke the.
Jonathan?
No, I I don't think we should revoke the permit. I think the the permit should be renewed. Uh, uh. I I. I just feel very strongly that that the heritage has got to come up with a system. That ensures absolute compliance. Demonstrable compliance with with our order. Uh, and uh. And if. You know, if we're back here. In the future, we have the same situation. Uh. Then I I think. Oh, perhaps what Ron suggests to a third party. Um. Coming in and taking the measurements. Uh, might be uh. You know, cost that gets added on the. The venue charges for the the party, you know, the sound engineer.
Right, we 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 shouldn't have to go there, but 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 maybe we can. Uh, Steve is our audio visual uh, expert. Would you be willing to bring up the existing conditions, which are just a matter of scrolling, I think, a little bit? Thank you ver- uh, thanks very much. Okay, so board members, if we um. Let's let's take them in order. Well, first of all, let's let's talk about how long. We'd extend this permit for. Um. Two years. Sounding too long. Um, Jonathan, three months. Where 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 were you going? I'm trying to read between the lines here.
Well, uh. I guess the automatic revocation idea is not satisfactory.
It's harder to enforce.
For, yeah, for a number of reasons. Uh. To do it for a shorter period of time, I I suggest that through July, that. That makes sense to me. We get through. Uh, June and July and uh. See how it's working at that point.
So July thirty one, you're thinking?
Yeah.
Okay. Ron, how do you feel about that?
Um. Well, it. Yeah, I I feel a need to have a periodic checkpoint. To make sure that it's going right. Whether it's, you know, renewing the permit or not. I don't know if there's another way of doing it. Rather than. Other than uh, just. You know, renewing the permit every three or four months or something.
Well, you're right. So where I was going was July thirty first is a Saturday. If we went through. Tuesday, August second. That would give a number of weekend periods between now and then. And everybody could get out there with their meters and test to their hearts content. And. For the applicant, it would be non optional. They have to do it and they have to turn in their reports every two weeks. And if and if the if the butters wish to. Uh, do their own testing, they're they're encouraged to do so, but do it the right way with the right machines so that staffs. What do you two feel about that?
Well, um. I'm wondering if if we could add a requirement that. Around all time that the applicant be required. To submit a report to. The board of its compliance. With the special permit. With the data. Um, a narrative. Um, what what they have done. To ensure their compliance and demonstrate their compliance. Um, and that uh. So we. Have the 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 permit actually go longer than. August second. But we we could have a. A reporting requirement. At August second. Uh, and. Set, set it down for a. I don't know, our August hearing.
So you're saying they'd have to turn in a report by August second of all the events through, say, July twenty fifth? That's the week before, essentially. Um. And so when would you have the actual? Renewal date be?
Well, the last uh. Permit is dated the. Twenty third of October.
Yeah.
So I would have it to the twenty third of October or thereabouts. Twenty twenty two.
Got it. So a a a stub period, less than one year. Cast all events, report every two weeks, submit a. Omnibus reporter or or sort of cumulative report, July. Through all. By. August second. Of all events through July twenty fifth. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yes.
And and would we, would we set up a a meeting with an agenda item to specifically? Review that interim report?
I think we should. I think we should. I think we should. You know. Or review it at our first uh, meeting that falls after August second.
Yep.
Steve, can you put the uh, the existing language back up, please? Thank you. Um. Okay. How do we feel about, well? We don't have to worry about. Um, post October thirty one, because the permit doesn't go past there. We've got an expiration date. Five would stay the same. Six is going to be not less frequently than every two weeks. We'll add a new condition about the cumulative report. By a cumulative report to be submitted by August twenty second, covering all events to July twenty fifth. Other parties can, of course, submit recorded test results. Before we go down to the um, butters suggested additional conditions. How do you feel about those edits to the um? Existing permit one through nine, gentlemen?
Uh, I'm okay with them.
Mr. Pitch.
Uh, they'd be put back up on the screen and scroll down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we yeah, I I was saying before we go down to those, I wanted to. I think I think we're done with the the so called amended permit list.
Yeah.
Steve, can you pull up your 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 suggested items? And and before we, before we go there. Um. Ms. Ziskin, you had something you wanted to say before, and I I. Asked you to wait, so please go ahead.
Um, no, I don't. I'm sorry. I now I lost my train of thought on that. I am. I apologize. Um.
Happens to all of us.
Um, I know, I was I was ready to say something, and now I I didn't write it down. Let me see if I can. Remember in a moment and I will.
Okay. Well, the board, the board will keep going. All right, so. Mister Constantine, thanks for bringing up your suggested new conditions. Um. Gents, how do you, how do you feel about? Any or all of these?
I think.
Number twelve, number twelve's easy. We've already solved number twelve because we're only going out to October, so.
Um, I think what I was going to say is we did do a lot of research when we were doing this. I went through a lot of channels. To get to where we are now and um, you know, as far as talking to different people, doing a lot of research on the sound decibels. Looking at other towns as well. Um, and had, you know, a huge understanding that that seventy five decibel was a fair. Um, requirement and I, you know, I I, like I said, I just know from when I've been doing my tests. And. What the traffic is, you know, I I understand I do it when there are not cars there and. It just seems like in general that, you know, the level of entertainment, the seventy five is a very fair decibel level. We've also put into our contract, like they can't. You know, we, they have to lower the base, like we can't have a lot of base. Um, and I do, I I apologize. I know April thirtieth, they they did have base and that's usually something that, um, you know, our managers are on top of and catch. Um. So I think that that, you know, but lowering the decibel level, I think would be, you know, really. Challenging. Um. And I think that just submitting the reports more frequently, um, you know, I I welcome regularity. I'm I'm a very like. You know, very organized type A person, so I think it's just, I feel terrible. I mean, I just is like this. I was not doing it and it's all on me not submitting those reports. Um, I think the last time I had come before you, I had just sent them. So I just kind of got in the habit of sending them before the meeting and was not submitting them monthly, but I definitely will submit them monthly. I mean, I frankly, I would submit them weekly, that I have no problem doing that. We take them. You know, we we documented. Um, so I would absolutely do that and I have no problem with that. I mean, we want this to be in, we want to be in compliance. We want to continue to have the music. I mean, we will not survive without. Events, we just won't. And because. The outside events have become popular. Me, you know, and having outside entertainment in general, people just love being outside. It's just, it's just changed. Things have changed. As far as the Sherborne Inn, I mean, at least I I didn't know the Sherborne Inn. I didn't grow up in Sherborne. Um, so. Every person I talked to is like I've had my. You know, we had showers, we had weddings, we had bar mitzvahs. I mean, it seems like it's been a life cycle venue for twenty. Eight years and that is my or longer now. We've now owned it um, over, you know, seven, almost seven years. And it had been in function for twenty five years. So I think it's a place the town goes to to celebrate. And also, you know, for bereavements too. So I think it is really become like an institution for the town and, you know, something that we really like. As a gathering place for the town. Um. So I I just hope like that all the research we had done originally will be taken into consideration. Um. You know, I I was not, I mean, I I feel unprepared for this. I was. You know, I did not expect this at all.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, board members, uh. That gets right to to our next issue. Uh, what's the sound level max going to be? Sixty, seventy five, something else? I suggest that until we get. Consistent data. From the same machines from everybody that we stick with seventy five, we're only going out to October, so it's not a two year commitment. But.
Did you repeat that? You're you're recommending stick with the seventy five?
Right, because it's a short timeframe and now everyone's got a real incentive to get in there and use the right equipment. And submit their data.
Yeah. Uh, I I'd go along with that.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I I would go along with it too. I'll tell you. I would like uh. Something more than a. A number. Associated with a date. Um. There could be some narrative indicating that. You know, when the reading was taken, was the band playing? You know, uh. I mean, what what if there's some some information that that uh, credits the legitimacy of the reading?
Uh. I I I think we've got the technology for that because while they're awfully small. If I recall from prior uh, discussions of this. The the reason that. Um. The heritage submits a cell phone picture of the machine. Is it time stamped and date stamped? So it says I'm getting, you know, seventy two point three de- decibels at exactly this time and exactly this date.
My point is, we don't know if the if the band is on a break.
Right, but 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 that but that that's why the opportunity is for the butters to come in and say, yeah, and same date. Two minutes later, it was seventy eight. And and they're invited to do so.
Okay, well, I I've. Whatever the uh. Uh, the N can do to. Credit its reporting. Information, I think, is. Can be very helpful. To its position.
Right.
In the long run.
And 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 likewise with to to the butters, if you're out there with the testing machine and in the right spot. And it's saying seventy eight eighty, you know, take a. And it's saying seventy eight eighty, you know, take a picture of it. Um, okay. Live or mechanical entertainment after events will not exceed four hours for any twenty four hour period. I had thought our prior conditions covered this. Fairly in terms of, uh. The upper cap. Um, it's a condition we, I think legally have the authority to put in if we wish. How do you feel about this?
Well, I I don't know enough about the business. I I think. To put it, uh. A time limitation, uh, on hours. It would foreclose the possibility of having two events.
Right.
And, uh. So.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not crazy about it either. How do you feel about it, Ron? Item ten up there?
Yeah, I I would think you might want to have an afternoon and a evening. I don't know if you could have two four hour sessions or.
Among other things, the the good news about the short time period is that we'll get a chance to revisit all this no later than early this fall.
Yeah.
With the applicant and the butters all. Highly incentivized to put their best data forward. Um, the sound barrier. How do you? How do you just feel about that suggestion?
Well, uh, way back when, uh. You know, the first through second Oktoberfest. Uh, this was a requirement. There was a requirement to put up a sound barrier and Elliot had a lot of input into that.
Right.
I recall. So. I guess, you know, from Jennifer's point of view. It would be a cost issue, I'm sure. Well. And also an aesthetic issue. You know, just get a couple of sheets of plywood and.
Right.
It's not. It's not the look you would want.
Right. The ones they use for Brew Fest, the one year that that it was done were not. They were not lovely.
But it it may or may not be beneficial. I don't. I don't know, you know, exactly where the barrier would be placed. Relative to the source of the sound. Uh, you know, would be a big factor. As to its effectiveness, so. I don't know. My my intuition says that some sort of barrier should help. Somewhat.
Do I have permission to speak?
Um, just for a second, uh, just for just a moment. Jonathan, where where are you on the sound barrier issue?
Well. I I hate to impose. A sound barrier. I'm not sure. It's gonna help the situation. I, uh. My preference would be to leave the sound barrier in the hands of. The owner. As you know, this is this is something that. The owner might do voluntarily put up a stockade fence. To address, address the issue. I I'm I'm not inclined to impose. Sound barrier.
Trying to save you all from my allergies and not succeeding. Um, Mr. Constantine, uh, you had something you wanted to say on the sound barrier issue.
Yeah, so I think Ron Ron was correct and that's what. This is when Elliot requested a sound barrier twenty four feet plywood and I'm not suggesting twenty four feet of plywood. It would be kind of ugly. Um, in. What I'm suggesting is a permanent sound barrier in the form of a stockade style fence. Um, and that's what's outlined here. Again, it would go from where the patio and the main building meet out to the street. And then run along. Uh, North Main Street to, uh, forty one North Main Street. Um, given, given that. You don't want to change the decibels, which. And I think I showed you the data from the other towns. It's excessive. It's not anywhere near what the other towns have.
Okay, but 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 Mr. Constantine, Mr. Constantine, Mr. Constantine, you've gotten away from the sound barrier issue into whether we should change our decimal level.
All I'm saying is is can we do a trade off? Okay, you want to keep the sound decibels where they are? Let's put a sound barrier up.
Okay, I I we 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 hear your suggestion on that and and we heard it before. Um. And and I get it and I respect it. Um. And and members, you know. How do you feel about that proposed trade off that seventy five should come with the handcuffs of barriers? Um, personally, I'm not sold on it, particularly on a relatively short fuse. A permit like we're gonna talk about issuing here, particularly given the cost. The reason they use plywood was it's unlovely, but it's really heavy. And most of what sound deadening is about is about weight, about mass.
It is mass. That's true. And it and it has to be a solid, you know.
Right.
Any gaps or leaks or.
Right.
Well, maybe, maybe it's something to be considered. You know, we're sort of looking at this. I don't know. You know, see how you go kind of situation. So it might be something to be considered. If. You know, if we come to August and there's still serious problems. This may be a device that could maybe help the situation.
Right.
But but not make it a requirement at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And Jonathan, would you go along with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so board members, let me try to sum up what I think I'm hearing. So Ms. Easley, you have your hand up or your electronic hand is up.
Yes, um. I know that, um. The petition. Uh, focuses on decibels. But Jen herself talked about, um, you know, warning the DJs or bands about the bass. And I can say from where I live and on Saturday night in particular, it was boom, 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 boom. So the other thing, and I'm not an expert, my son's a bass player, but. You know, there's the frequency of bass and. Uh, subwoofers and. So I'm wondering if in addition to frequency. For some, you know, just the volume, there's there could be a an alternate or an additional. Control for baseline. So it's not just you turn it down to be nice, but that you cannot exceed a certain measure. And I don't know what that measure would be. I'm not a sound expert. But, um, I can say for Saturday night that. The baseline is what was excruciatingly loud. Um, so I don't know. You know, again, I'm not an expert and I don't know if this is just something you could investigate for the future as you're looking at. Putting controls, um, or limitations on the music that gets played. Um, well, the recommendation or an idea.
Um, it's it's probably a very useful idea for down the road. Um, and since we're going to be revisiting this permit. No, no later than October. You've got all summer to find out what the what the right way to to regulate it in a way that's fair and objective is.
Okay.
Again, and anyone who's got an outdoor entertainment venue near them. And it's been through this fight. Uh, there's a, there's a lot of, uh. Literature. There's a lot of language out there. There's a lot of pardon the pun noise out there. Um, and and the art is trying to figure out where the science is. Um, and and you're right. I don't. I don't understand it well enough to either. Um. Okay. Um, so board members, um, how would you feel about the following? We renew with petition. We renew with conditions to October twenty three, twenty twenty two. The conditions are, uh, Steve, can you please bring up the the existing conditions? Just so I can read them off. Thank you. Oops, a little higher. Thank you. Um, condition one. Will stay in place for the duration of this permit. Condition two. Will stay in place for the duration of this permit. Condition three would stay the same. Edition four, the special permit would expire October twenty three, twenty twenty two. Uh, condition four, sorry, condition five will stay the same. Condition six. Um, would be that the permit holder shall submit all such test results to the ZD ZBA, not less frequently than every two weeks. Together with a cumulative report. By not later than August second, covering all events through and including July twenty fifth. Condition seven stays the same. Condition eight stays the same. Condition nine stays the same. And I'd move that that be the permit renewal. What do you think, gentlemen?
I second that.
All right, maiden seconded, uh, further discussion. Um. Ms. Ziskin, Mr. Constantine, Ms. Easley, you've heard where we're going. Okay, they're just sharpening up their pitchforks and warming up the boiling oil, I can tell. All right. Motion made. All in favor, say aye. We'll do it by roll call, no backcodes, aye.
Perfect guy.
Pitch aye.
Okay. Permit renewed, read nothing. Um, October twenty third, twenty twenty two. A butters and petitioner, you all have some some work to do. Good luck to all of you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you all.
Yeah, everybody.
All right, now we're gonna have to show our own screens from now on. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Guthrie, what's our next petition? The continuation of fifty Whitney Street, right? Okay. She had to go off and do something else. Okay, so.
I'm here. I'm just ignoring you all.
But what else is new?
What's the score of the basketball game, Jean?
Losing.
Ah. That's terrible.
Wait, hold on. Mike said we're winning.
Oh, good. Okay, we like that better.
We were losing.
Yeah.
Okay, so on the tape a at the end of last time or near the end of last time at twenty dash twenty four dot fifty six. Um, we discussed taking to continuing to take more times we could work with the petitioner on enforcement. Um, since then, a bunch of materials have come in that look. A lot more like reargument. Um, my suggestion to the board is that we, uh. Uh, listen to a brief reargument, given the materials that the petitioner and Mr. Murphy have submitted. Um, and that we then, uh. We then discuss it. So is that okay with you, gentlemen, if we entertain some? Yes, reargument, rehearing, whatever, whatever you litigators would say, Jonathan?
Well, no, I appreciate the materials that Mr. Murphy has submitted.
Me too. Okay, Mr. Murphy, I bet you're speaking for the petitioner. Go right ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, just to really sum up, uh, pretty quickly, I this has gone a lot later already than you probably planned for tonight. Um, the ZBA does have the power to grant the relief that was requested by the applicant. Um, the work that was done, uh, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, you still will have. A structure too close to the road in this location as you had before. Uh, I think the case law suggests also that for this type of change. That it is not an increase in the nonconformity as a matter of law. Um. Um, I think the alternate to grant to the request for the grant of the relief is unnecessarily harsh to require him. To take down a corner of the building or to take down the whole side of a building. I think it's, you know, without mincing words a little bit, it's punitive. Um, it's, uh, expensive. And it's disproportionate to any harm that really, uh, is of any cost to the community as a whole. Now, we all live in this community. I think they always time always say at town meeting that. You know, we come to town meeting as neighbors and even if we have a disagreement, at the end of the day, we're neighbors again and neighbors all the time. And so, uh, what we're looking for is some relief that the. That the board can give. Um, I think the board. Uh, at times, uh, in even this last hearing. Uh, they hear that there wasn't exact compliance with some rule and the board tries to fashion something that works. And I think that's. What this board has always done, uh, and see whether or not it can do something that works. I do also understand, I didn't mention it in my materials. Um, that there is always the question about, well, why should this preexisting nonconforming person get something better than what a conforming person should get? Um. And although, uh, I don't think it's the best answer in the world that I would hear. I think the SJC Supreme Judicial Court did tell us that the only reason why they get something a little better. Is because the legislature has given them that favor. And by giving them that favor, it gives this board the power. To, uh, give them something that it couldn't give somebody else if they had to do a variance type of analysis of the situation. I think what we've done at the very end of our of my presentation is I told you that there were three preferences. Obviously. Uh, you would know that I would want the first preference. Um, but I think the, uh, building inspector suggested as a second possibility. Is that there that the the board accept. A approach to this as no part of the structure can get any closer than the thirty point two. That was previously identified as the closest part to the street from before. And I think there are some decisions that the board has made. I know there were some decisions that I made when I was on the board. Uh, that did embrace that concept. I don't know that it's a concept that has always been embraced. But it is a concept that's not foreign to analysis of problems like this. And again, in a situation like this where there really isn't any harm to the neighborhood, it is a possible approach. Now, we have said that, you know, we really are looking, if that's what the board is going to do, we're really looking to get. A conditional certificate of occupancy to allow them to occupy. Um, we do also leave in the possibility that they could appeal it to see whether or not there is. A legal basis for just the grant of the relief as something that they're entitled. And that's fashioned into that second preference. I don't think I need to belabor it. Um, and then the third preference is basically if. The board really is not interested in doing anything other than discussing. Uh, enforcement. Um, the third one essentially says, okay, if you're going to enforce us, enforce this against us. Please give us the right to again occupy and then appeal. Um, and then if in fact, uh, they lose the appeal, uh, give them a three month period of time to do the work. Um, they've given you some estimates. If it's only the corner, it looks like a six to eight week job. If it's if it's the whole side, it looks like it's an eight to twelve week job. So it's both both of those jobs within that that three month period. That I think was loosely discussed at the last hearing. So again, um. They tell you to say what you want in the beginning and to say what you want at the end. So I'm saying what I want at the end. Which is to please allow this construction. Um, grant the permit that was requested or the finding that was requested. And no matter what you do, still please make a finding that this is not substantially more detrimental. And no matter what you do, still please make a finding that this is not substantially more detrimental. I think the lawyers amongst us know why I would ask for that if in fact the board made a decision to deny the permit. And then it went up to an appeal and the court said, oh, we remanded back because they should find out whether or not it was or wasn't substantially more detrimental. And I don't think anybody really needs that to happen because I think that part isn't really in dispute. So I'd ask you, no matter which of the preferences that we've listed, that you still make that underlying finding for the purposes, I think the, the, the board members understand from a just a procedural standpoint. And thank you for this additional time to make this presentation. Thank you for letting us submit additional information. I do also want to thank the building inspector, he's been very helpful to us, he really has tried to see whether or not he could work through a situation that we all didn't want to find ourselves in. But we are where we are and I would ask for your indulgence, thank you.
All right, and, and certainly speaking for the rest of the board and myself, we appreciate your, 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 your brief treatment of this issue. Board members, we have two very difficult questions here, one of law, one of practicality. I'd like to take a shot at what I think is a, a pretty skinny path through them, if you'll indulge me. On the other hand, Ron, if you want to go through all of the cases, I've got this chart here that I've done, I can't quite put it up, you can sort of see it here with all of the cases, we can talk about, you know, all of them from, from Gale to Comstock in whatever nauseating level of detail Ron can possibly tolerate. But, but I think it's, I think it could be done pretty simply. Our job is to administer this bylaw right here and I'm gonna try to share my screen. See if that comes up. Everybody see it? So the problem in Sherburne is that we have this provision that again, as, as Mr. Murphy points out, has been enacted, reenacted, and reenacted and blessed over and over again by our legislator town meeting. Any change, alteration, or extension shall comply with all existing setback height and dimensional requirements of this bylaw. Now historically, stop sharing for a second, that ran into a line of cases. Including the Dedrick case and a couple others, let me try to share again here. All right, can everybody see that? We've got owner A and owner B. And the, the one on, on the right, owner B is something we've talked about a lot before because it's the little cheat sheet that we use. And Jim, maybe when you're on the board, you use something like this. But owner A and owner B have identical lots right next to each other and this line you can see at the bottom of the screen is the street. And they're right next to each other in, in a zone that requires a sixty-foot setback, so that's this dotted line here. And owner A, his existing house is completely behind the sixty-foot setback line. And owner B's house has an existing nonconformity, probably an old house like Jonathan has, like Ron has, like I have, that was built within a setback. And so that existing nonconformity is right here, it comes to within forty feet of the street. And the way we've always analyzed one point four point six and the Dedrick line of cases is that what they want to do in area zone, area two here, more than sixty feet back, that's as of right. Nothing's needed. In area three here, which is within the sixty feet but more than the forty feet, no closer to the street, we've always said that should be a one point four point six finding. If it's not substantially more detrimental, we can go ahead and authorize. And we've always taken the position that area five, anything going closer to the street needed a variance. So it needs a variance for area one and area five. In each case, moving closer to the street than they're already entitled to go. Now, in twenty nineteen, the Valalta case was decided by the SJC and an awful lot of commentators said, ah, well, this is great because this, now this means that in area five here, it doesn't have to be a variance anymore, a finding will cover this all the way out to the street. So say the people who read the law, now what the law actually said was that a building where the FAR was intensified by a slight increase in the dormer, that increase in nonconformity did not increase the nonconforming nature. Those were the words that Kate, of course, used. Now, there's only one case since Valalta and that's Comstock versus Gloucester. Certainly only one that I could find, I think only one that Jim could find either because we're both studying the same cases. And in that case, the appeals court said. Okay. Let me try to share my screen again, there we go. Yeah, can everybody see the text there? Comstock said that the people who thought the law was a game changer were wrong. That said, there are limits to where pre-existing nonconforming single-family, one or two family residents has limits, it's not sufficient to, to get a finding, you do need a variance. And their key reasoning, interestingly, is the same reasoning that we've used, which is what about two people who are next to each other and one's just over the line and one's just behind it? Why should the guy who's one inch over the line necessarily get a free ride all the way out to the street when his neighbor needs a variance? So the question for us is, let me stop sharing here.
Well, there's the word substantial, substantially in there.
Correct.
And the question, I have in this case is, is one foot substantial?
In the cases, they said ten inches is not substantial, this is twenty inches, it's a little under two feet. If you use the measurements of the, of the original surveyor. The original, the original registered land surveyor did this.
Point two feet. Am I wrong?
Three point two, no, twenty-eight point, well, let me bring it up, but I believe it worked out to be eighteen to twenty inches, it was not ten inches, but it was under two feet.
I, I think if, if you're talking about if you're talking about the, the length of it, it possibly could be up to two feet, but in the one spot that was set by DeShang, I do think Ron is correct that it was a much smaller one point two.
But, but Sean, well, okay, let me, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll go in, I'll get it because the nice thing is that the first and second registered land surveyor was the same guy. So let me just jump in, I'll find out. A mere moment. Okay, next screen sharing.
So this guy has it as twenty-nine feet. And that was supposed to be thirty point two.
Yeah, that's, that's one point, one point two feet. So it's one foot, maybe two and a half inches, something like that.
Hold on, let's get the facts.
I, you know, I have some concern that if we don't grant a special permit that we are not gonna be we're not gonna prevail on judicial review. Any snacks?
Well, we've, we've got some options there. Hold on here, I can't seem to get this.
I think the other one does say twenty-eight point five, one says twenty-eight point five, one says twenty-nine, so it's either one.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the, 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 thank you, Jim, the apples to apples one was twenty-eight point five, the thirty point.
Okay.
So, again, under two feet, more than one foot. The question is, do we want to change our our rule and say well, it's okay to go into the front area without a variance? And I, I don't think that's necessarily a hill to die on, but if we do say that, decide that we can do that by finding and therefore give this guy a finding, we should have to invite back a whole bunch of people that have, who've turned away in the last several years. Starting with sixty-three Western Avenue, one thirty-three, Nason Road, and that's not that's not the end of the world. But, 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 but it is a material change. And the question is whether that material change in light of the very clear language of our bylaws be made by us or by town meeting.
It's, it's the reason for it being where the new construction is where it is. Was that simply an error? Or was that a result of somebody saying they needed a garage deeper than what's the foot, the existing footprint allowed?
There's, there's, there's debate about that.
Basically, that is that he, he, they put it in, they thought they were gonna get two cars into the garage. The guy said, you know, oh, it's gonna be better with two doors than one door. At least somebody sent me a, a plan that said, hey, that, that dimension there was, you know, one inch equals this many feet. And he blew it and he blew it by a, a foot and whatever. And, and you know, maybe somebody should have been right there on the spot when they decided to go from a one solid garage door to house two cars to two separate garage doors to house, house two cars. But if you take off the corner or you take off the whole side, you're gonna get one car in there.
And I, well, and I do. No, wait a second, that, that was a double with single door, I mean, I, I, I've done this garage work unfortunately. And the problem is the double doors are a lot more convenient and they're a lot easier. But it takes about two more feet. Because why, I wasn't at all surprised to see that it was suddenly two feet over the line because that's what happens when you put in the second door. So I think it answers your question, Ron, there is debate about the level of culpability, clearly professionals who do this all the time pour the foundation, then they get the building inspector out a second time to measure and make sure everything's fine before they put up the rest of the house. To avoid exactly the situation where but, but they had to see the old foundations, was not an academic exercise.
Again, I, I, as I, as I argued a little bit, I think the Bjorkland case says and that this is a small change. That is not an increase in the nonconformity. And I guess I would say if there are other cases that happened before Bill Alta in two thousand and nineteen that you decided on and I represented them, I would come back in front of you because I think it does give you some options. So you do have the Comstock case that says ten inches, no problem, doesn't say you have to do a variance, it says you do a finding.
The Comstock case has a ten-inch overhang up in the air.
No, it's still a way that you measure things, this is the same way Sherburne measures.
Right, right, but, but don't, but don't say ten inches is okay when they say an overhang, it's, that's not what the court said.
And it's the same way that you measure an eve as we do in Sherburne, which is.
So just, just say what the court said and we'll let them speak for themselves.
Well, you know, I, I, my job is to advocate, I don't, my job is necessarily to advocate on that and I don't, I don't, I don't know about that, but I would say that in Bilalt, they say that the municipality's bylaw, so one point four point six may not afford fewer protections to pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses than does the governing statute forty A, section six. So one point four point six is subject to the way in which forty A, section six, the second except clause has been interpreted the way that I urge that it should be read.
Well, I, I was, I was with you until that last part, which is I agree, one point four point six has to, has to give way to the state statute and the then governing interpretation of the state statute. The Comstock case goes the other way and they're interpreting Bilalt.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't read it that way at all, I mean, the section that I highlighted in.
I can put it back up on the screen, but, but, but I don't think I, I do not think you and I advocating at each other are going to change any minds here. You can let the board try to trash this through.
It says that is because even if the extension of the eaves into the airspace of the side yard were deemed to increase the nonconforming nature of the garage, that increase still would not require a variance, that, that's what it says in Comstock.
That, that is, that is correct, that the eaves under the Gloucester zoning bylaw are allowed to intrude. But, Jim, you know, I, I would, I would like the board to be able to discuss this.
Yes, sir.
I, I just, I just think the situation is different when an application comes before us prior to the construction. And we interpreted this, this section one way, which is that you, you shouldn't, you shouldn't make the non, you shouldn't increase the nonconformity. But in a circumstance where someone has perhaps mistakenly built something that's less than two feet difference in what, what is it, close to thirty feet? My interpretation is that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Well, I, I, I certainly agree with you. The, the legal point that Jim and I are debating is whether or not that's relevant here. Because if you need a variance, saying it's not substantially detrimental doesn't help.
Well.
But, but saying you need a variance puts the rabbit in the hat, I think is what Jonathan's gonna say, which is, that, that's the question, is do you need a variance here or not?
Well, I think that the Alta case made it clear that you don't need a variance when you're increasing the nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconforming residence. So have we been interpreting the state requirements to restrictively by not allowing in your example, somebody moving closer to the road? That has been consistently what we have done. And it's it's not it's not wrong to that our policy is, has been not correct.
Right, or, or we can just say whether or not it's correct, we're choosing to change it.
Yeah, well, I think that the applicant has quoted the language from Comstock that noted above municipal zoning boards are empowered to issue special permits allowing the reconstruction of pre-existing nonconforming residences that would increase existing nonconformities so long as they find that reconstruction would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
That's correct.
That, that language does, does not say refers specifically to the overhang of a roof, Rick.
No, it, it refers to the, to the, to the top of the roof, which was changed. And the city of Gloucester has a specific zoning bylaw provision, which is not like our one point four point six, which does allow such a special permit. So the court was correctly saying, I agree with you, that city had the power, as Sherburne has the power, to allow by special permit these intrusions into what I'd call area five. Now, what we're being asked to do is not the end of the world, is to say we're elect, this board is electing to say area five here is now gonna be a one point four point six finding based on To say area five here is now going to be a one point four point six finding based on. Bilalta. And if that's the way you guys want to go, I'm not going to stand in your way on it. But I think, I think we do need to be consistent. When sixty-three comes back and several others come back and say, okay. Now these are all, uh, findings.
I don't disagree with that. And I. I think it's, uh, counsel has pointed out. There is a, an argument that. That, uh. The applicant is entitled as a matter of law to this change. Uh, and doesn't need. A finer.
Well, I'm not sure I agree with that, but if we give him the finding that, that'll be an academic debate, we can, uh, debate over, over, over a cocktail sometime.
Well, Rick, can I, can I ask you this question? Are, are you saying that? That the only, uh. Legal, legally consistent way to allow. The structure to be. Where it's built is to grant variance.
And these facts and, and inconsistent with my read of Bilalta and Comstock. And our prior policy, yes. Which is problematic because he doesn't qualify for variance. So then we get into practical things of. Do we let his family live there under some temporary CO while he works on cutting off the corner or trying to move it back or whatever?
Well, there's a financial, uh, consideration, isn't there?
Yeah, but, but remember that the basis for a variance and why it's so problematic is you have to have something unique in your soil. Shape, conditions, things like that. And, and here it's just that they put the garage in the wrong place. And that, that type of variance was essentially outlawed in nineteen seventy-five. But if where you guys are going is. You want to choose to make this area five where it clearly is. Into a finding under our policy, we can change our policy tonight in, in the form of this decision. And two out of three votes. I think carry the day for a finding, right, Jim? And.
Interesting question. I, I think the finding is the one thing that doesn't say anything in the law.
Right. Especially. The variance, you definitely need all three.
And special permit, you definitely need all three.
Right.
Well. You know, the, the problem with the interpretation is. The word substantial.
Right.
And, and my interpretation of this. Situation is that. That the non-conformity is not substantial. But somebody else could interpret. Uh, could, could interpret that differently. But, but it would be clear to me if, if some, if, if you, somebody came before us. With, with your example. Which looks like. It, it, it could be a ten-foot intrusion into the front yard.
Right.
Uh, that would be substantial.
Well, and, 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 uh, not to, not to let the cat out of the bag, but I'm thinking of when I grew up owner B, I was thinking of sixty-three Western Avenue. Which you spent a lot of time with last time. They, they have exactly this situation. They've got a slight non-conformity and they want to make it bigger. And we said, no. Doesn't mean, they, they withdrew so they could come back again. I'm just, I'm just saying, if, if we go this way, we ought to be willing to, to, to stay going this way. We'd have to enforce it that way with. One thirty-three Nation Hill and a bunch of other people who say, wait a second, it's not a very big intrusion. It's not the end of the world.
Well.
What do you wish to do, Jim?
You asking me?
Not you. I should, I should have been more, more clear. Vote, voting members of the board, not former members of the board.
Well, I, 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 I think it's kind of a no-win situation because. I think Jonathan was alluding to the fact that. If we require. That they tear down the wall to move it a foot and a half. I, I, I don't think that helps our reputation.
No, although, you know, in, in, in the course of those, uh, the discovery, you know, exactly who said what to whom, when. And how inadvertent it was and how accidental it was will come out. Yeah, as it did with our friends over on Maple Street. They'll, they ultimately chose to, to tear it down, but, but I agree that the costs of, uh. Shaving off the corner are substantial. I, I think the costs that were submitted to us are. Probably inflated, but they're not nothing. Let's not, you know. Let's not pretend the case law is super clear because Mr. Murphy and I. Uh, disagree about it strongly, but so do lots of lawyers all across the. Uh, all across the Commonwealth and they're, and they're smart, good people doing their jobs.
Well, I, I think if you look at the, uh, Bjorkland case, it's also cited by. Mr. Murphy, I mean. The, the concerns of. Making small-scale alterations, extensions, or structural changes to a pre-existing house are illusory. And they. And the, the examples that are then given as, uh. Things that are of such a small scale nature that the improvements could not be reasonably found to increase the non-conforming nature of the structure. And the court thus concludes as a matter of law, they would not constitute intensifications. I mean, uh, this. Situation. Falls into a, a category of. Of, of, of a small scale. And I am, I am concerned that if we do not. Grant a, a special permit. Uh, on a finding. That, that just simply will not be upheld. When, when appeals court reviews it.
Okay, well, um, and, and Jim Murphy, I think you'd agree with me that what we're talking about issuing here is a finding, not a special permit. Cause under our zoning bylaw. In Gloucester, it was definitely a special permit to allow the intrusions into the, into the setback area because the Gloucesters zoning bylaw. Anticipated that, but ours under warm one point four point six just talks about a, a regular section six finding. You agree with me on that one?
I would think that the best course for this board. Um, to not only grant me what I want for my client to protect itself going forward. Um, would be to make a finding under one point four point six. And luckily, one point four point six, I thought also.
I can pull it up.
Uh, it still has a substantially more detrimental language.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Concept, so it's, so you have the ability to use. One point four point six consistent with the case law without going too. But, well, still staying close within it in the event that on another case. You are confronted with arguments that are different from the one that we're making here. So. From my standpoint, if you made a finding under one point four point six. That this would be not substantially more detrimental. You could do that. My, my problem is, you know, uh. Is a proviso of, because that proviso says. Shall comply with all existing setback height and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, which. In my view. Uh, has to be subsumed to the standard in forty A section six second except clause. So, so, but I, I, I do think that you can. Give us what we want in this one, which is to make a finding of one point four point six, that this is either. Not so, either or, or not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or. Is not as a matter of law, an increase in a non-conformity under Bjorkland. Um, you can do that and or. And that you can authorize what we wanted, the building inspector to issue a certificate of. Occupancy for the existing house without any further alteration.
Well, and, and, and the good news here, uh, Mr. Murphy is that unlike a lot of situations in this and other towns, there is not some. Fire-breathing neighbor just itching to run to court.
Right.
Um, no matter what we do. So, um. One, uh, thing that listening to Mr. Murphy, Jonathan, we could say, uh. He built. He has an existing, he has an existing finding that we made allowing him to build in the old foundation. You could move that under the Bjorkland. Case. This board find that the additional two feet is not. I forget the language you were, you were quoting out of the case, but you can tell where I'm going.
Is, is a small-scale alteration.
Right. And you probably get at least one more vote for that. If I'm hearing Ron correctly. And then you'd have to.
Probably.
And we wouldn't have to necessarily face today. The issue of changing our policy, although I think we ought to. Definitely think about it. But it wouldn't necessarily put us on the banana peel of having to say yes to sixty-three Western and everybody else who comes in with. Something more than two feet.
But I. I do, Ron, uh. Think that it, it does. Get into this situation in a Bjorkland case that, that last sentence quoted in. Brief here because of the small-scale nature. The improvements could not reasonably be found to increase the non-conforming nature of the structure. And we conclude as a matter of law. They would not constitute intensifications. Uh, and. And they, uh. In that decision, they referred to examples of, of small-scale alterations, including, uh. The addition of a dormer, uh, the addition or enclosure of a porch or sunroom, the addition of a one-story garage. For no more than two motor vehicles, the conversion of a one-story garage for one motor vehicle to a one-story garage for two motor vehicles. Uh. The addition of small-scale proportional.
I wouldn't agree that all of those things are necessarily. Small scale, but I, I think. You know, if you're talking about the two feet here. And it's a little less than two feet, but, but let's call it two, or, let's call it twenty inches, just to keep it as, as close as possible to.
Okay, this is what the SJC. Uh, is explaining it considers small-scale alterations.
Right, but then they went the other way in another case. I mean, this, this is the problem that Jim and you and I and everyone else has is, is there. Thirty cases out there and you can pick one that says, look, it goes exactly this way and they're not. As intellectually honest as all of us would likely be about saying we're overruling. This one. They, they tap dance around each other. Well, do you want to make a, how would you feel about it? I'll toss a motion out there. That. The board. Beamed the. Additional. Less than two foot. Non-conformity. In the unique circumstances of this case. Could be Jonathan, what was, what's the language again? Small scale. It's small.
Small scale. Alteration, extension, or structural change.
The small-scale alteration, a small-scale. Extension. Uh, allowable under existing case law. So I'll read it back. The motion is. That we make an additional finding. And under the unique circumstances of this case. The less than two-foot. Alteration be deemed a. Small-scale alteration allowable under existing Massachusetts case law.
Can you read that one more time?
I pretty much caught my tail, let me try. That the board finds that under the unique circumstances of this case, the additional less than two-foot alteration. Is deemed, is found. To be a small-scale extension allowable under existing case law.
As a matter of law.
Well, I could say as a matter of law, right? I mean, we're, we're, we're a quasi judicial board. You can make the motion, you can adopt it. You want me to read Jonathan's motion back?
Yeah, one more time.
Sure, as many more times as you gents want. The board finds that under the u- unique circumstances of this case. The less than two-foot. Alteration. Is a small-scale extension allowable under existing case law as a matter of law. Period. That's what I've got written down here. Amendments, alterations.
Sounds okay to me.
You're gonna be your motion, Jonathan. I'm just, I'm just the scribe.
Okay.
You move that?
I saw move.
Jonathan, you second it? Or, 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 Ron, you second that?
I second it.
Okay, any further discussion or debate? All in favor, say aye. I'm going last.
Stefan, aye.
Fitch, aye.
Novak, nay. But Mr. Murphy, you get what you want.
Very much for, uh. This, uh. Indulgence to a difficult situation. I do think the. Motion was proper that it was a unique circumstance and the board can with, uh, have a lot of discretion as it looks at each case. But I do really encourage you to. Uh, be kind to your neighbors. Um, because I think that's the nature of this board. It always has been. It's always been much appreciated. It was my, it was my favorite board to be on of all the boards I've ever. And I hope it is to you too.
Right. And, 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 and it is part of being good neighbor and we welcome you to town, Mr. Dennehy. We do not want to see this type of misunderstanding again. I'm sure you hear us on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and welcome to town. I hope, hope you and your family are very happy here.
Thank you.
Um, okay.
Staring your screen.
Okay. Ms. Guthrie, the all-important basketball update.
I don't know. Mike's watching it downstairs. We're winning.
Okay. All right, um. Do we need to set another agenda or anything like that?
Um, not right now. I know that, um, I know the Luskens want to come back. Um, they were gonna come back with something that works to be more non-conforming. So it's up to you if you want to make one for next month or. Towards the end of June. I don't know what you guys are doing.
Uh, I'm not available the last week in June.
Okay.
Nor the, nor the first two weeks in July.
Yay.
I have to jump, so can we adjourn and then we will.
Yeah, we can do it another time. Okay.
All right.
Oh, good.
Thank you all very much. Have a great evening.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you, Jim.
Bye bye.
Thank you.